Planning board is now in session. Good evening. First item on the agenda is preliminary subdivision, 25 Park Street. This is our third night or second night with this?
The third evening, yes.
The what?
Third.
The third. So...
Oh, sorry.
Second meeting. Second meeting. Third meeting.
Third evening.
Zach, would you introduce yourself and be kind enough to introduce the special family members that are in here tonight?
Certainly. Good evening. Zachary Bemis with Engineering Design Consultants. This evening representing the Morrow family. I don't know if I'm able to do all the names in a row.
Sylvia Morrow, Susan, Jeanne, Rachel.
Sylvia, Susan, Jeanne, and Rachel. Morrow. Very good.
We're all in force tonight.
Yep. Okay, welcome. You're on.
Good evening. So this is the third run-through on this project. This evening representing and contrasting conventional subdivision on the lot, comparing it to a flexible development on the lot. Just to kind of get everyone aligned back with where the project was. At the end of Foley Drive, the current house, the Morrow homestead, number 25 Park Street, currently being serviced by a road that has an easement through the New York Central rail line out to Park Street. We're proposing subdivision of that lot into two residential lots. Conventionally, in order to get those two lots, it's going to require waiving the roadway construction. It will have to be 35 foot wide, as well as a reduced circle radius compared to a standard by right subdivision, as well as no open space, which will be a component of the flexible development plan. On the sheet, you can see the road coming in. It maintains the residence that's there existing as number 25 Park. Let's see if this shows it. Now comparing that with the flexible development, what this allows for is the right-of-way only to come in about 100 feet into the property, generating 240 feet of frontage. That's 80 for each lot, as required. It will result in open space delineated here in the green highlighted bounds. Frontage for the first lot is in the area highlighted here. The next 80 comes around and the remaining 80 is for number 25 currently. This allows for more flexible location of all the houses to all the lot lines with the required setbacks with a flexible development. The other thing to note also is the zoning line between business as well as Residence B. The Residence B encompassing number 25 Park. Everything off to the other side where the two residences are proposed is actually zoned as business. So by right, someone could go off of, could come in there off of the park easement and create a business there, which is another thing that either these plans will eliminate the possibility of that in the future because certainly the nature and the feel of the area is residential, not commercial. Those are most of the talking points that we've discussed before. If there's any other further questions, I'm more than happy to answer them or field them from the board.
Very good. Thank you very much. Open it up to the planning board, Mr. Mills.
Thank you. So I know there was, Peter had shown an even more preliminary plan that had the possibility of all the homes up on the... What side is this? On the west side?
Up here on the hill?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is it still not an option or...
Fitting all three houses, well, the one house is already up on the hill. And then three more to the rear would probably be a little tight and it would... You already have houses here on Lata squama. And the idea and the intent with the open space parcel being where it is, you know, being large here, was to create a screen and a buffer so that folks in one yard won't really see the folks in the other.
And the, I know there was a comment made before about open space right of way through the walk back to still the Park Street.
Yes. And that's being accommodated here. The part of this looping part of the open space is following the existing path, the dirt path that is there that goes around the barn. That would be maintained and it would at least allow for access of the public along the drive through the green space over to the end of the property or through the remainder of the easement space out to here. The distance being the rest of the way to Park Street is through the easement and isn't something that we have the power to give right to pass on.
Yeah. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Jenks.
Zachary, would you point out the actual frontage that's on the turnaround?
For the conventional?
Yeah, well, what they own, what's...
Currently?
Yes.
For 25 Park Street?
Yes.
They don't actually own frontage on 25 Park Street. If I go to the conventional... Park Street is down over here where it ends. They have a dirt drive that goes from the very end of Park Street down through the woods and it never actually gets onto their property until about where the metal shed is. The rest of their dirt road that is there is all along that access easement that was granted back at the late 1800s. So what ended up resulting is just this sort of weird parcel getting chopped out. And like my father said in the past, when Foley Drive came in, there was a missed opportunity to incorporate that property as part of the development of Foley. And hopefully with doing this, the land certainly can field to more houses. It'll sort of fix that oversight in the past. But there actually isn't any frontage because Park Street frontage would end here and there is no way to actually connect. To fix that, what had subsequently happened was a land transfer between number two Foley and 25 Park. This is the current frontage that legally exists now so that he would not be landlocked if something were to have changed and say this access easement was voided by New York Central. So he actually has access onto Foley now, creating that misnomer where it really should have a Foley address.
So what, how many feet of frontage on Foley would be transferred?
Under the proposed flexible? In both cases...
Well, you've got to have access, according to what you've shown, you have to have access to Foley.
Yes.
What I'm looking for is how many feet along that turnaround on Foley is available for that access.
51, 51 feet.
And you need 50, which is why conveniently it's 51, I assume.
51, 3, 5.
That does it. And that's a transfer to be done upon approval of a plan, I assume.
Yes. So if we were to go conventionally, what would be creating is what would look like a spur road coming off of Foley, off of the cul-de-sac of Foley, resulting in another cul-de-sac from which all of the frontage then gets developed for these other three houses. None of these houses would have frontage on Foley. It would be this road which, say, is Morrow Drive for just argument's sake. All three houses would have frontage on Morrow Drive. Morrow Drive would then have the 50-foot access to Foley to make it a continuous, one road to another, road for one right-of-way to another right-of-way. But what we're proposing is to not go the conventional approach because this would require waiving the required right-of-way width. We'd only have a 35-foot wide right-of-way, not 50. And also the circle, the cul-de-sac turnaround circle, which would also be trying to waive the construction of, would be smaller than prescribed in the subdivision bylaws as well.
When, excuse me, when you talk about waiving construction, exactly what are you asking us to waive?
The physical construction of it. Preparing a road base and paving it with asphalt on paper, tax purposes and everything. The parcel would look like it's being shown with the cul-de-sac there. The cul-de-sac just would not be constructed. There wouldn't be curbing around it. There wouldn't be asphalt. It would just be a straight-through driveway servicing the two house lots.
Can't tell from that. I think you had said you would, you would construct from Foley up around that bend. Is that right?
Yes. So the current gravel path that is there is our alignment in both scenarios, conventional or flexible. We're still following that same path. In the flexible case though, the legal definition of the right-of-way only extends 100 feet, whereas conventionally, we're going nearly 250 feet into the property.
Paved?
No, I'm talking just legal boundary descriptions, the geometry of it all.
Okay.
Extending that far in. In both cases, there will be pavement extending all the way from Foley to all three garages. Or in the case of the existing 25, it'll probably extend to where it currently extends. It's a mixed gravel and asphalt.
But not the paving that would otherwise be constructed to make a street?
Right. It would be residential driveway construction, not a formal street because we would not be looking to have these streets accepted as public ways or maintained as such.
Look at the flexible plan and show, show us where, what are you calling frontage on that plan?
So in this case, our right-of-way is coming off of the Foley circle. And the dark bold line, I should say, is the actual legal description of the right-of-way. You can see the lighter hue there. That's the actual where the curbing was placed and such. There's usually, you know, five, 10 feet of offset between the two. So coming from the intersection here, going down, you can see where the yellow highlighter mark is. The highlight mark to the right would mark the first property's frontage up to, I'm sorry, here. You would have this little smaller spur coming off of Foley. It doesn't need to be as long.
Let me interrupt you there and ask you, you've shown us frontage for the first parcel.
Yes.
Where's the rest of the first parcel? Would you just outline it? What is that frontage for?
That frontage is for this, so many lines. The frontage is for the area marked by green being the open space. So this line here. So it does this for that lot.
Okay, and that is not a buildable lot. You're not building a house on that lot.
No, there would...
That goes where the stone barn is now?
That goes where the stone barn is, yes.
You would be taking the barn down but not building a house there, or am I wrong?
There would be a house right here.
You would, you would be building a house.
Not exactly on the footprint of the existing shed, but there would be a building there, yes. There are three lots to be created out of this.
Okay.
And three frontages.
All right. Stay with that lot for a minute.
Yes.
You know the silly 62-and-a-half-foot ball in our zoning code?
Yes.
How are you going to do that?
Not on this because this is flexible. Those, that, oh, thank you. The ball is for conventional. So in the first plan, there is a ball. It does pass through each of the lots. With the flexible, it's allowing the designer and the board more creativity and flexibility.
By waiving that requirement?
So these lots would look irregular on plan, but as a result, the benefit is now there's all of this preserved open space as a result. And in the case here, we get access for public use, continued, you know, it seems to be an existing use that's being used there and that will be formalized as a result of this process. So it's a trade-off, I suppose. You have irregular-shaped lots, although I wouldn't say that it's anything more than the land could support. But that's the whole intention of the flexible development is to allow for things in this case where there isn't great frontage. Honestly, in order to have fixed this problem, Foley shouldn't have ended where it ended. If Foley had extended another 100 feet or so, wrong numbers, that would probably generate enough frontage for all of these lots. But unfortunately, we're stuck with the geometry that is in place already and this will at least result in, I think, what will be a nicer development at the end of the day.
Can you run through that same exercise on Lot 2?
So Lot 2 would be getting its frontage from here to here, here. Back to Lot 1. So the frontage for Lot 2? It's right here.
How many feet of frontage would that be? How many feet of frontage would that be?
Each are getting 80. Where, where the division lines are actually being shown, I'm probably not highlighting as smoothly as would be desired, but each one gets 80, it is 240, I guess 240 to go around on that construction. And should there be a mistake or something drafting error-wise, there's nothing that precludes that road from extending, that spur from extending a little bit further to generate the extra feet required to attain the requisite foot, uh, frontage.
So in this case, frontage is not frontage on a existing street, it's frontage on a driveway?
A driveway under the flexible development procedure, yes, but it is a driveway, yes.
Have we ever done that? Do you know, or has your dad mentioned that that's something we've done before?
In the case of a spur, no, but, yeah, I had it for the next parcel because it's actually identical to what we're proposing, but I can't see how it's any different.
Yeah, I think you've got it on both projects.
We're asking for very similar things in both.
I don't, I don't know if we've ever done that.
This is an instance on Marlborough Road, just north of St. Mark's, the one on the plan, and that's showing a small, little, like, half cul-de-sac coming off of Marlborough Road. It's its own named street, and it's generating 80 feet on either side of that semicircle. And so we'd be doing the same thing, except in order to get the three lots and the requisite frontage, ours isn't a semicircle, ours is a spur. Like a J shape.
Okay. Run through the third lot for me, just-
Yes. So third is the squiggly line, back to here, here, and then back in.
And that's the existing, the existing house?
That's where the existing house sits, yes, right here.
So you are in fact only adding two new lots?
Two new lots, yes.
Okay. Where, would each lot have its own septic system?
Yes, each lot's going to have its own septic system.
And where are you with that process?
Right now, we still have to go before Board of Health formally, we still have to go before, I believe Conservation, yes, most certainly, Conservation Commission as well here. Those things are still issues that, you know, need to be run through. Right now, at the preliminary state, we're trying to determine whether or not, before we either issue a definitive with the conventional or we pursue this flexible, which of those two we want to advance with for both projects before you this evening.
Can you do the conventional plan under existing zoning?
No, that requires reduced right-of-way width as well as a reduced turnaround circle radius. So that is, would not be by right. That would require waiving.
Would that require variances? I don't know either.
I'm not sure, actually.
I can tell you that we have examples, not that many, but there are some around town where the board has approved, has, has voted four to one, I was the one that was against it, to reduce a, a right-of-way from 50 feet to 35 feet. The board did that. Whether we had the authority or not, we did it, and the, the project was built and there were houses there on, on a 35-foot frontage to an existing road. There's other examples. The La Haye is the most recent, but there's, I'm thinking of, there's, there's got to be more than one, but I know there's one paper street that the board approved, which was the, you know, as shown here, the, the street was shown and, and could be built in accordance with zoning. But the, the nature of the land and the rest of the subdivision, it was decided, it was requested and I guess approved, that the street, portion of the, the street that would, or a street that would give lots legal frontage was just never built. But it is in the record as a 50-foot right-of-way that could be built. So the two examples I'm thinking of, in addition to the most recent La Haye approval, one was the board granted the waiver of the reduced, reduction from 50 feet to 35 feet, and in another subdivision, the board granted approval to not construct a, a road, be a paper road. But it was proven to the board that the road did comply, that the frontage was available, and it was just not necessary to build the road because of the configuration of the other road. I don't know if that helped.
Under the flexible plan, this would have to be done as a subdivision, am I right on that? Yeah. All right, I have no other questions at the moment, but I'm sure I will.
Phil, you, your questions are, there's a, there's a couple of things that, that I'm seeing here coming out. First of all, is it's hard to understand the plans and the, the lines on the plans. So if, if the rest of the board agrees when we get through this, we may ask for maybe the same plan but in different layers, so they're not all laying on top of each other and we can distinguish the lines, the open space lines, the lot lines, the driveway lines, the opens, the easements and all, all that stuff. It may have to be broken out into several sheets. So, and then the other thing, of course, is, the question as to what, what our authority is relative to these requests, if we do have the authority or if it has to go to the ZBA.
Mr. Stein. The easement you referenced on the gravel driveway with the railroad, the easement is with the railroad and whom?
Uh, back in the day, when it was first granted?
Well-
It runs, it runs with the land.
Has it changed?
Uh, this was initially, you're talking about the access that allowed for the construction of this gravel driveway out to Park Street?
Yep.
I want to say it was, it's like 1888 or something like that. It was granted by the railroad to the Winchester family. I believe that's the name of the road downtown that's named after them, old family in town. It was then transferred in the process of selling the land to the Marrows. So that is how they've had access over the road. Falcone's also has access to the, this buffer strip as well, that they have some vehicles over here that they use on, we're talking about the west side of the rail, rail line.
Is that a recorded easement?
Yes, yes.
With Falcone?
With, oh, I didn't check Falcone because that's, it's off locus, off focus. But ours is very much a, a real deed and you have to sharpen up on your cursive because it's written by hand.
I would recommend that that be part of the, the plan. I mean, if it's, if it's on the land, it's, it's part of the land.
Mm-hmm.
We, we would incorporate it into the plan, wouldn't we?
Well, as property owners today, all that can be granted is what, what's owned here. So you can't create a green corridor on land that isn't, that isn't ours. If you go there, though, and you would ever walk this, I, I think the railroad has long since forgotten that anything like that exists, and I couldn't foresee any reason the railroad would do anything differently, especially with other folks having other uses in the same area, that it wouldn't, it's not like they're going to just all of a sudden add another spur line or some dead-end line to service some non-existent but future development right in the heart of downtown Southborough. So I don't see them seizing it any time, but all that would have the ability to actually give would be in the green capacity up to the edge here.
On this plan that's in front of us tonight, I, I see the words erosion control barrier. That's, that's, that was not in the previous submission, was it?
Is that on the flexible or are you looking at the conventional?
I don't know. Do you want to come over here and tell me?
Oh, you're definitely looking at the flexible, yes. Can you just point out where you see erosion control?
Right here. Erosion control barrier.
That would be silt fence and the like. I'm concerned why that is on there, though. For the purposes of right now, all that is is a silt fence, it's proposing where the silt fence would be located, right next to the property line, so it's probably a two-to-three foot offset from the existing property line, staking every 25 feet with wattle, silt fence, just to make sure that any sedimentation and stockpiling of materials, that it wouldn't flow off-site because that's part of, part of that site work matter.
It's typically a construction detail.
It's inappropriate to be shown on this plan this evening, and I apologize that it's there.
So it's not something, you, you haven't gone in front of the Conservation Commission yet, have you?
Not yet, no. So right now with the preliminary, we're just trying to feel out which of the two, with a flexible or a conventional, which way we should try to approach doing a finalized, you know, this is all preliminary, we're just trying to, you know, assess the situation.
So nothing's gone in front of Concom?
Nothing's gone before Concom, nothing's gone before Board of Health, although there has been preliminary soil testing.
And at the, the previous meeting, I had requested Mr. Bemis contact historical, I mean, if for no other reason, just to get a comment on the barn. It is a historical building and-
Yes.
The comment very well could be, we don't care, go ahead and rip it down, but I think that it would be proper and appropriate to have a comment from the Chair of the Historical Commission.
We have. I don't believe that comment's been, like, circulated via email, but my father did have that meeting. They did go to the site and, and look at both. When we were on the site last Friday, Ms. Latrell and Mr. Jenks were with us. We tried to go into the barn, it was right when the thunderstorm came and there were bees swarming the door, so we weren't able to go in. But if you go there during a storm event, the roof leaks, several portions of the wall are, are falling off. One corner was hit accidentally by a vehicle, I believe. So the building is in great disrepair. And it was determined that the way to salvage it would be to preserve the existing house number 25, Park Street, right now. That is not necessarily a historical house, but it is an old house. It's got a fieldstone cellar walls. That was determined to be the salvageable and practical solution for dealing with the site in terms of historical measures. The barn is gorgeous, but it, it is in quite a bit of disrepair and falling down.
As far as landscaping, has there been any discussion about what type of screening would be used or plantings?
In the open space or the site itself? Or both?
Well, it would seem to me that on Lot 3, you would, and you might even have some screening at the, the, the entry point to the, I was thinking more towards Foley.
Over here?
More there.
In here?
Well, that's not-
That's not our land. Our, our land is very much the, very edge of the green.
To-
Right here?
Sort of screen off the-
The side neighbor?
Right.
Yes, I, I think ultimately that'll probably be desired too, because this is where the existing gravel drive, road is, since that's going to be used for public use, you know, a public path and stuff like that, you know, presumably there could be, you know, people, you know, in and out, you know, going downtown and such. The homeowners here will probably want some degree of screening all around the property, frankly.
And that hasn't been-
We're not there yet, that, that's, if you, if you compare it to a house, you know, that's like the, the trim and stuff like that. We're just, we're trying to hash out the, the rough details right now, and that would be part of either the finalized flexible development here or conventional.
So the building on Lot 3, how close is that to that open space?
To the sides or the rear?
To the sides.
To the sides?
Because the, that's where you would want the screening to go.
Right.
I'm just wanting, wondering if there's enough room there for-
You have about 35 feet, 40 feet.
So you feel that that's enough room for the appropriate screening?
Yes.
That's it for me, Don. Thank you. Mrs. Latrell?
Hi, thank you. I think our bylaw has a preference for the flux over the, the conventional. However, to pick up where Phil left off, that in order to determine the number of lots, you need to show a conventional that meets all the zoning?
Yes.
So with no, no waivers?
With no waivers, right. Our conventional does not fit three building lots without waivers. I guess in, since there is flexibility with the flexible development approach, I guess what we'd be looking for is, the land can support two additional house lots in addition to the lot, uh, the building number 25. It produces open space in a, which, which is beneficial to everyone. It'll incorporate the access to downtown as well as eliminate this potentially messy situation where you have the zoning of business, of, of business zoning and residential being next to each other, and I don't think anyone wants to see, you know, any sort of business and, you know, commercial-type presence on the end of Foley Drive at all. So in order to close that and forget that it ever existed ever again, I, I don't think that that's, it's inappropriate to ask the board to waive it, although I do understand, I, I know which, I know which order you're talking about, and we do not comply with that.
So while we can waive our, the rules and regulations, we can't waive bylaw. That would have to go to the ZBA for variance. And the bylaw requires two plans, a conventional plan to set the number of lots in full conformance with zoning, subdivision rules and regs and health codes, and then the, and then the flex with those number of lots. So I'm not arguing that this is a better use of the land and the open space, that just, it needs to conform with the bylaw. And it's also lacking, it's short on open space, too. It's a 35% requirement.
It's 35%.
And the little strip of open space, it's like 11 feet wide behind Lot 2.
This one?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
What's the purpose of that?
I think my father was going for, instead of having isolated pockets of open space, he's trying to preserve the natural border of the area. The pond is here, there's a tree line along the edge. I think he was just looking for one continuous, uniform area that there wouldn't be isolated pockets. I don't think he, that, that could be, that could be manipulated.
Yeah, we've found that the narrow strips are-
Useless.
Useless. Useless, to put it nicely. And on the plan, just clarification, that whole section by the pond is all open space? It's like the lines stop and there's like a space in the middle that isn't hatched?
I believe the hatch was just to avoid it being too noisy, too messy. As a result, the entire area in green that's being shown here is open space.
Okay.
And that does include the entirety of the pond.
Okay. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. I get the feeling that the board is interested in the flexible plan, that we're not quite sure of our authority relative to moving on with that. And then, is that true, is that the way the board feels, interested in the flexible plan? To me, I think the flexible plan that you submitted, it's dated August 2nd, that's the plan we have in front of us?
Yes, August 2nd.
To me, I think if you clean this up a little bit.
It sounds like the board would like to know exactly the delineation of all three lots. You know, the actual shapes of what those three are gonna look like, instead of having to interpret it from just lines?
Yes, that's part of it. The open space, and then the actual configuration of the right-of-way, the new right-of-way. Maybe an explanation as to why it's shaped like it is. So we have until August 20th to take action on the preliminary plan. The board can approve it, the board can disapprove it, the board can do nothing. And then you just decide on your own what you want to do.
Right.
But I think the message here tonight is that there's interest in the flexible plan within our authority, which we, I think we need to clearly define those areas that you're not complying with. And then if not on our own, then we would get help from Town Council as to what our jurisdiction is in approving or waiving some of these things. So that moving forward, the proper board is taking the proper action. Anybody want to add to that? I don't know if we're in a position to say that the flexible plan is approved.
Right, and the board doesn't need any more information to make that determination, right? Or they don't need any more information from us, the applicants?
Yeah, we do, we need the plan cleaned up so that we can
The plan cleaned up, yes, but as terms of the jurisdiction
No, and once we understand what the plan consists of, then we can compare that to what we think is our jurisdiction. And then if we're clear on that, then we'll move ahead, if we're not clear, then we'll ask Town Council to help us. So that we make sure that we don't approve something, that we don't have the authority, or it doesn't move on to like the ZBA when in fact it shouldn't. So there's some guidance that's needed, but before we can understand it, we have to understand the plan a little bit better. So I would suggest making a list of all of those areas, all of those things that don't comply. Relative to the current zoning for the residential B and the Business Village District, and relative to the flexible plan. We've, as I said earlier, the board has had some experience with some of these things that you're asking to be waived, but I don't recall us having, the board having a combination of these things, a cumulative effect to get where you want to go. It may be okay, but it just doesn't seem like we just need to have it cleaned up, cleared up a little bit.
Sure.
So we can move forward, so if that's what the board wants to do, then does the board want to take any action tonight? Does the board want to recommend an extension? Mr. Stein?
I have a little bit of a scheduling concern. I'm gonna be going up to Maine, to an island, for a week, next week. I'm gonna be just getting back in case something, I don't know, weather, who knows? For some reason, for logistical or work conflict, I'm unable to make the August 20th meeting. It's a little bit of a concern because then we have Labor Day, and I think for another item before us, we had extended out because of Rosh Hashanah, so I'm wondering what, if there's, you know, some way we can consider extending this out in a similar fashion? So that we can take care of the stuff and not feel rushed to vote on the 20th.
And I'm at the week of the 20th.
Oh, you're not here either? Okay, well, there you go.
Yeah, the Town Planner and I have talked about not having a meeting on the 20th for various reasons. So if the board decides to do nothing, then that's within our authority. And you can proceed based on what you've heard from us.
Right.
If an extension is granted, and you're really looking for an approved preliminary plan, then it would seem that you'd want to request an extension to the approval period into September. Do you have the authority to request that?
Yes. Is there, the meeting happening in August, wasn't it the 27th, the 20th? That's not happening any longer? Okay.
What's the next one, Karina, September?
Our next scheduled, tentatively scheduled meeting is September 10.
So I
And we also have
We have one on the 17th.
We have, yes, we have one posted, you know, every year at the beginning of the year, we schedule a bunch of meetings. So we have one on that tentative meeting date scheduled that's preset for September 10. But at the last public hearing for another project, we added September 17th for the two public hearings for Northborough Road. And then we have another Planning Board meeting scheduled for September 24th. So right now we have on paper the 10th, potentially, then September 17th, we have officially continued public hearings, and then September 24th.
May I ask a question? In order to proceed with either a definitive subdivision or the flex, do we, does the board need to make action on the preliminary? Does the preliminary need to be formally closed, I guess is what I'm asking?
We don't.
You don't, okay. So one could
We could let the time lapse, and once it does, you can decide what to do with that.
Okay, there's, I just didn't know if there was a formal closing that was required of a preliminary.
It's one of, it's one of the three options really, approval, disapproval, or do nothing.
Okay. So I guess in that case, let's schedule then for, or I'd request an extension?
So you'd come back on September 17th?
The 10th or the 17th?
17th.
17th, yes.
So you'd request an extension to the 21st, that's the Friday? So you'd be requesting an extension of the approval period for the preliminary plan? And what's the date of the preliminary plan?
I'm sorry, come again?
I'm glad that you don't understand the question, because we have a preliminary plan that was submitted. Then we have an August 2nd flexible plan that was submitted. Right now, we're working on, and according to your father's email that we received today, where is it? Town Planner questioned what the relevance of the flexible plan dated August 2nd was relative to the previous plans that were submitted in
June 25th?
In June, is it June 25th?
Yes.
Okay, so, and the response, email stated what? "We have only introduced the flexible development as an option that I agree would need to be processed separately." However, at this preliminary subdivision stage of the project, it makes perfect sense to see if the board feels if there are any benefits to this layout over the conventional layout. So, you know, great credit to you for, you know, throwing the line into the water to see what you can catch. But the board needs to know what plan we're working on and what the status is of these plans. So I believe that the June 25th plan is the one on record. The August 2nd plan, which is entitled flexible development, that requires an application for a special permit. And we have not received an application for a special permit. So I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the board should consider this flexible plan that is submitted for our looksee but no action. The August 2nd plan.
Right. Since this is preliminary review though, and we're sort of following where the path takes us, can both plans be considered part of the review?
A flexible plan requires an application for a special permit.
Even under preliminary, or under a preliminary standing, since it wouldn't be formal yet? Or is there no such thing as a preliminary flexible?
I think you need an application for a flexible plan in order to have the board consider it officially. We're kind of drifting in this gray area where you've got a June plan that was launched as a preliminary plan, we've had now our third meeting on it. And then we get this other plan that's kind of floating on the table here, and we're talking about it. But the board must make sure that we know exactly what we're supposed to do and what the time limits are on each of these plans. And the way I understand it, the June 25th plan is the one that has a current, has a 45-day action period, which ends on August 20th. Flexible plan is not considered a formal submittal. Mimi?
Yeah, I think you're right, Mr. Chairman, the preliminary plan is the subdivision of land under Chapter 244. The flexible is under the zoning code 174-13 whatever.
Right.
So there, under that, there's like a preliminary meeting, but it's not a preliminary plan. So we'd be looking at the conventional plan in September. Unless, is it your desire to move forward with the flexible? And should we disapprove the conventional and get that out of the way and then move forward with the flexible?
I can't disavow the conventional yet, because I still need it for the flexible anyway as a comparison point, correct?
Right, but it doesn't need to be a, it doesn't need any action under the preliminary. That would all fall under the special permit.
If we were to disapprove the conventional plan, the reason would be the lack of the 50-foot right-of-way. So if that's disapproved, then their concept of a flexible plan wouldn't have anything to be attached to. I guess either way it looks like the next step between, for you, is to request an extension of the approval period for the preliminary plan dated June 25th
Yep.
to September 21st. That will allow, that'll keep this plan alive. And then between now and September 17th, you can huddle and decide what, if anything, you want to do with this August 2nd plan.
Right, okay, that is my course then, I will ask for an extension of the June 25th preliminary subdivision plan.
And that extension is to September 21st?
The 21st, yes.
Mr. Mills?
What time do you want?
And in the meantime, you can also try to make this plan clearer for us to understand.
Yes.
Along with a list of areas of non-compliance. Couple of which were brought up tonight, the 35% open space, the you know, the 35-foot right-of-way.
Right.
That's currently the schedule with the two public hearings for Northborough Road.
Chairman, make a motion, we continue the preliminary, do we need to make a motion for this? It's not a public hearing.
We're granting the request for the extension.
Make a motion, we grant the request to extend the preliminary subdivision plan approval period to September 21st.
Second?
September 21st, close of business, is that correct?
Close of business, correct.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? All in favor? Five to zero, we'll see you on the 17th.
Thank you.
Right, yeah, we'll pick the time when we get closer to the date, so you'll know what time to show up.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, thank you all. Our next item on the agenda is a preliminary subdivision 12 Pearl Street, are you gonna do that one too, Zach?
I am gonna do that one as well, yes.
All right, I have to leave, I'm recusing myself. So let the record show that the chair has been turned over to Mr. Mills.
Thank you.
Karina, did you have an update, or are we just turn it straight over to Zach?
I can do a brief update.
Okay.
All right, so the preliminary subdivision application was filed with the town clerk on July 6th. We received various comments from the fire department and the Board of Health. On July 23rd, we had the first planning board meeting related specifically to the preliminary subdivision application. On August 3rd, Peter Bemis submitted this plan for the flexible development concept for 12 Pearl Street, which was distributed to the town departments today. We also have to determine if we want Fosse &amp; O'Neil to re-review the flexible plan. But I didn't, they have the plans, but I didn't engage them to continue reviewing until we knew where we stood. So, that brings us to tonight.
Thank you. So you.
Good evening, Zachary Bemis with Engineering Design Systems. This evening, I'm representing myself as one of the proponents, as well as Mr. McIntyre. Just to quickly recap what we've talked about before in the past with this site. We're property number 12 Pearl Street on the south side of town. Is currently a single residence on the lot, just north of two acres of land area. What we have proposed is a conventional subdivision. This fully complies with conventional subdivision rules and regs. So by right, two lots. The resulting right-of-way that would be required to service those two lots shown here, forming a cul-de-sac in the end. Again, if we were to pursue a conventional approach, we would be waiving construction of that road. It would remain private, owned by the two houses that it serves. The, that's fine, the flexible, on the other hand, would involve a significantly shorter right-of-way, resulting in the 80 feet. On paper, it would look something like half of a circle, half a cul-de-sac, enough to get 80 feet for both lots. The resulting open space would line the perimeter. On both sides, the chosen open space on these parcels more or less coincide with where wooded area is today on the lots, while still maintaining most usability for the two proposed houses. I know we're also going to deal with that same issue of whether or not we've submitted a conventional and this is piggybacking on the back of it. I suppose right now with this evening, what I'm looking for is, again, another sort of gut check. Do, does the board prefer the conventional or does the board prefer the flexible in going forward for the formal requests for either option? With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Jenks.
Yeah, I've got the same questions about frontage that I had on the other, so.
Regarding the flexible?
Yeah, so.
So currently, there's this frontage on Pearl?
And that is?
Oh dear, he didn't label it. Hold on, hold on.
We don't know what that is, that's okay.
I'm sure it's on the, it's on the conventional plan, I believe.
Okay.
So then, for the two lots, they pivot about this singular point. This is the property line dividing the two. This would represent frontage for lot two, this is frontage for lot one.
Zach, you have that light highlighter, you could, the pink.
Oh, yes, yes, I have the highlighter.
So the frontage from lot one comes down to Pearl Street essentially in a point.
The frontage, yes, it's a tapering, well, this is, even the open space is still part of lot one for tax purposes and such. But yes, it is a very, but both lots are coming to a point.
I'm, my problem is, I haven't yet wrapped my head around how you do that.
Through the flexible.
Looking at the definition of frontage in our bylaw. You have moved it from Pearl Street to a.
A new road.
A new road that doesn't exist.
It will exist. This is a separate road, just like the example there on Marlborough Road. That became, that became La Haye Circle. Just as here, this road would become named as well. However, it would remain private and it would not be accepted by the town. Something else I also have, I know last meeting there was interest in knowing legally how a road would be defined for a private and not allowing it to then become public again. Those are my father's instruments that he's used in the past in other towns for those definitions. And, I do only have the one copy, I'm sorry. Yeah, he only printed the one, I'm sorry. I can, yes, that can be emailed. And that's not, that hasn't been set up for this particular application yet, it's just a generic version. But the actual would be something similar. And that has application at Park Street as well, not to reopen that. But it, something similar would be used for the lots created off of that private road as well. So I guess to follow back to the shapes. They are ugly-looking lots. However, doing it this way results in all of that guaranteed protected open space. Whereas doing it conventionally without, and again, that is by right. We can do the conventional, but it results in that very large right-of-way going up there. And it's a lot of work just to service two houses. You know, they could, that right-of-way can be deeded out legally. It can be built, the street can be built per all subdivision requirements. And it can be ultimately accepted by the town too and maintained as such. But it doesn't seem appropriate or in the spirit of subdivision bylaw for all of that effort and ultimate liability that the town would have to inherit. As opposed to, I think, this option where it remains minimal. Pearl Street's not a very large road to begin with. And this would certainly keep with the nature and character of the area.
I think a negative of that is that that, that road can be changed after the fact.
The, on the conventional?
It can be modified under this agreement. And if, if we're counting on that road and the, the requirements for frontage built into that road. Oh, so it can't be changed. Okay.
Just to clarify.
Yes.
What you shared with us tonight was the maintenance agreement. Which is, is an agreement between.
Between the two parties.
The people that live on.
Yes.
Private road, in terms of who's going to plow it, who's going to fix it.
Right.
I don't think that, I don't think that the modification of this represents a modification of this.
No, I think you are right, because here I read that room.
That's just to exemplify who's going to be taking care of it, maintaining it, in lieu of the town, since it won't be a public way.
You good? Yeah, just.
So, I share Mr. Jenks's concerns with the jurisdiction of the board, at least that's how I'm interpreting his comments. Vis a vis our ability to approve frontage on a currently non-existent road, which, once it does exist, actually would be a private road. This, to me, sounds like a prescription for the intervention or oversight of town council. And I'm not sure what the historical appetite of the planning department is for getting town council involved, a taxpayer expense on a preliminary subdivision. Are there any insights by our town planner or any other members?
Just say your last statement, I just didn't catch.
Well, what I'm asking is, would it be normal and typical, I actually, on Park Street, were we going to have town council review that? For the same type of question regarding jurisdiction?
For Park Street, what we're asking is a clearer plan to understand where the lots are, where the right-of-way is despite it being a paper street, what you're paving and where your open space is. And then, once the board sees that cleared-up plan, they can determine if they have jurisdiction of what, over what you're asking. Or if, at that point, when all the lines are clear, you know, the question will be, is this zoning jurisdiction or is it planning board? And that's when they'll ask town council for an opinion.
Right, and in this instance, we have a clear, at least to me, it seems fairly clear. I can read it. It's just a question of jurisdiction to me.
May I, may I respond?
Sure.
We, you do have jurisdiction here, whereas the other case, our conventional did not produce three lots by right. This does, so there is no issue there.
The frontage, I think, is the question.
Frontage, we can, if I go back to my, to the conventional, this road becomes your frontage.
Right, but you want to do the flex.
We would like to do the flex, yes, but we've proven that two lots can be done here by right. So that would fall under the flex, which falls under planning board review. That, it's not an issue with zoning any longer. I understand where Park Street, there is this gray zone that we've gone into, and it needs clarification. But on this lot, I don't believe that's the case, because.
I can tell you right now that, you know, it's, I guess it's okay for us to have this discussion on a preliminary. But you, when you guys do, when you guys move forward with the flex, we are probably going to get town council involved at that point. So I guess you just run the risk of, you know, incurring the expense of doing it. That's your decision, that's a business decision, I guess. But, you see where I'm going with this? We don't, I don't, I, I understand what you're saying, but I'm not 100% convinced that we have the authority to approve something that on, with frontage on something that doesn't exist yet. And I understand that it's tied to a conventional plan that does show the appropriate.
Right.
But I'm not a land attorney, that's why we have a town council for exactly this type of thing, so.
Okay, but as part of the flex plan, the, nothing would be built until the frontage was legally created anyway. It would be part of the sequence of steps, you can't do them out of order. So it would exist before any ground was broken. Because I would say the same, your concern, I guess, would be this, imagine a perfectly conventional subdivision. None of those roads exist yet until the planning board gives its right of approval and it gets recorded at the registry of deeds. That wouldn't change in this case either.
Okay, and I guess, all I'm saying is, I don't have any major issue conceptually with this plan, other than jurisdiction.
Okay.
And I, we go around in circles all night.
Right.
Eventually, we're going to get a legal opinion on it. See what that, see what the.
Jesse, are you referring to Fosse &amp; O'Neil's review comment suggesting town council review of the common driveway aspect versus, you know, what they're proposing here with the paper street?
Well, I was kind of also piggybacking on Phil's comment on the frontage.
Right.
So, both.
Right.
But that's it for me for now.
Mr. Latrell.
Yeah, the confusion for me on frontage with that, I know it'll be on the registry of deeds, but that's the only place it will be. And by definition, the frontage has to be both legal and physical access. And if that's not going to be there, it's not going to have a physical access.
You mean physically paving that road? Like that, that circle, circle feature?
Yeah.
We would be, with going down this route, it can be physically built. I don't think it would look the best. And I, we would probably be seeking to waive that. But you're saying that the frontage needs to be physical.
Both legal and physical, so legal.
It is, it is physical, you know, there is this distance that goes between the two. But you're saying it needs to be more defined?
Well, my definition of physical is that it's actually there. And I, I don't disagree with you, I think it would be a shame to put that big blob of pavement there.
Because there are.
But I don't know how we, how we, how we get around the frontage otherwise, I don't know.
Because there are paper streets that exist that don't have physical definition, but they are, they still do have frontage to them.
Yeah.
Things like that.
That's way beyond my pay grade. So enough with frontage, let's move on to open space.
Yes.
Here, we have an, by 12A Pearl Street, there's a little eight-foot.
This, yes.
And along the back, what's that, like 12 feet or something? Those are.
It's 1215, yes.
The, I don't like the little skinny strips, they've proved to be nothing but a headache and they're, they may be legal open space on a plan, but they never end up being open space in real life.
Okay.
And the, also the zigs and the zags.
This, yes. The purpose of that is, that's following existing tree lines. There's an existing house here, number 12.
Right.
There is a yard with that as well.
Yeah.
So, where the tree line is currently is what's being modeled by the open space that's there. That's what this area is, because it is wooded now, so it will remain wooded.
Okay.
The small little areas here could certainly, those, there's flexibility with this as well, I would say. My father's not committed to these personally. I would want more trees on that side. I wouldn't mind moving more open space to the larger parcel or something that came in between the two lots and acted more like natural screenage between the two.
Yeah, I don't.
But we have plenty of space to work with, so I, we'll certainly get our 35%.
Okay.
On the lot.
That's, and the other concern is that this is, goes through the wetlands.
It does, yes, and we.
Twenty-foot, no touch.
Since this is just the preliminary side of things, we're just trying to determine preliminary versus conventional, those two approaches. We still need to go, like at Park Street, we still need to go before Board of Health, we still need to go before Conservation Commission. So those are things that are still on the agenda. And we wouldn't be expecting you guys to necessarily approve this. What I'm really interested in knowing is whether or not the flexible versus the conventional is the desire of the board. And that doesn't have to be a firm yes or no, it's more of a nudge in the right direction. Just like with Park Street, I think we've, it's been very clear that the flexible is far more desired and the better option for that development, the same thing would be said here. I don't need necessarily a formal determination, one way or another, on this issue. I don't need necessarily a formal determination, one way or another, on this issue.
Well, I like the flexible better and I think it makes more sense. Pearl Street's this little teeny road and that, you know, dirt driveway fits in with the little teeny road. I think that would work much better. We just have to figure out how we can make it work with our zoning. That's all I have. Thanks.
So, you know, while I do like the open space aspect of the flexible development, I am most concerned with the little half moon roadway giving the access to begin with because it does go into the wetlands. And I'd be concerned that then we start drifting into the Wetlands Protection Act and needing additional, what? Wouldn't?
I was going to say, we will have to file a notice of intent.
So, I guess I'll leave it up to the rest of the committee or the board. You have people feeling ready to vote or to give the nudge into the direction of which plan we're more comfortable with?
I am, I'm certainly leaning toward the flexible.
Flexible.
I am also, but are we looking at the preliminary conventional? Like, do we need to take action on that? This is that gray area of where we were from the other one, too.
I guess per what we did at 25 Park, I guess you can only consider my conventional because that's the only thing we, my father's put an application in before you. But it seems like I'm getting the same indication on the two projects. So...
If that's the case, then I think you're, we'd be looking for a motion to disapprove the conventional.
Andy, can I just add one thing?
Well, it's by right, though, so I don't believe you can not approve it.
Just, I just wanted to recount to the planning board members that at the prior meeting, there was discussion, there was a comment from Fosse O'Neill regarding turning radius for the conventional plan and the access drive and eventually what will happen there. And I think that your father was going to demonstrate that turning radius could be achieved.
He didn't send me with a diagram. I have seen the computer file that we work with. And that does have turning templates that are developed by ASHTO. The rig in question can be turned in it, and I've seen the template of it. Certainly, that would be made, no matter which approach we do, flexible or conventional. That diagram would be part of the submission when this became formal.
So, I mean, then I guess I retract that statement about disapproving because then, in case you get the impression that we couldn't use that to demonstrate the flexible development, but we could just take no action and you have your, the input
Right, right.
of what the board is leaning towards and then can take the necessary steps you would like to go forward.
Okay. So, just so I make sure I know what the board's concerned with. Obviously, the issues with the wetlands, which would be covered with Conservation Commission, as well as physical definition of frontage with the way it's being shown right now. Whether or not that would be physically paved or not. And if it's not, how else are you going to define the frontage of the two lots?
And the turning radius?
And turning, yes, yes.
You've also got a new septic system?
There will be a septic system for the new proposed house, yes. So, Board of Health is obviously going to be involved in that as well.
I think, just to tie, just to close out the open space question?
Yes.
You were going to do more open space?
You didn't want the thin corridors. You'd rather have lobes or areas of concentration, yes.
So, you might even consider doing a submission to the Open Space Commission. I would.
Anything else?
Correct. You're taking no action?
Mr. Chairman, I move we take two-minute recess.
Second.
Question for two-minute recess. All those in favor? See you in two minutes.